Good evening. I'll call the meeting to order. Celine County Planning and Zoning Commission. First item will be to approve the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Second. Been properly moved in second. We approve the agenda for the March twenty-six, twenty twenty-four meeting as printed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item B, approval of the minutes of the February twenty-seventh meeting, twenty twenty-four. Any comments on the meeting, on the minutes? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm move we approve the minutes from the February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four meeting?
Second. Properly moved in second that we approve the minutes of the February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four meeting as printed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. The motion does carry unanimously. I will turn the meeting over to staff.
All right, gentlemen. At the February twenty-seventh meeting, the planning commission tabled the public hearing considering an amendment to the zoning regulations, section thirteen A dash twelve thirteen, commercial wind energy conversion systems, to include language addressing any currently recognized alternative energy sources and incidental uses associated with them. The commission directed staff to provide additional information from Douglas County regarding their regulations to be discussed during a study session open to the public. Once the study session has concluded, the public may provide additional comments. With that, the staff has been able to obtain administrative reports and minutes in the number of about seven hundred pages worth, I think, or whatever.
You would take.
So, yeah.
Not that we were counting.
No. But the, they, believe it or not, in staff's opinion, they weren't very detailed, but these reports will give the commission some insight into the reasoning behind their provisions that they came up with. The Douglas County provisions can be modified to fit Celine County's needs. And just to remind you again of kind of the things, whenever we look at amending our regulations, you always have to look at, like in this particular case, the comprehensive plan. You have to consider safety. You can consider acreage limits, pre-application outreach, bonding and financing and decommissioning. And with that, if you want to go ahead and do your, your study session portion amongst yourselves to discuss what was submitted and see if you have any, you know, see what your thoughts are on those.
If I may, Tim, could I ask about the Dickinson County project? Was that, did you get information from, obviously, I know you're, you work in Dickinson County as well.
Yes.
Do you have information as to how that commission put that little, that wind farm in? I don't know how big a wind farm it is, but...
Well, if you're talking about the DSNO solar facility over south of Solomon, because we don't have the, there's been nothing submitted yet for a wind project yet.
No, it's a solar array, though, right?
Yes.
Full of, full of take panels?
Yeah. And it's DSNO requested, if it's, because it's a small, because it's on property that they own, south of Solomon. And they, it's on eight acres. And so it did have to go through a conditional use permit, but we put conditions on it like we would any other, you know, what we would consider a substation or any utility, because it's tied to their facility. And it utilizes their, I think, the substation that's there, south of Solomon. And so it's because it's owned by them and managed by them, there was no regulations that had to be put in place there at that, at that time. We're working on it now. Ironically, the same, our planning, my planning commission over there is considering the very same amendments as you guys are considering here. I've given them almost a mirror image of everything that, everything I put together for you, I've been giving to them, too.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Will Crewe, I'll open up the discussion. Where do you want to begin?
I guess one, one question or maybe point of direction after going through this and looking at, you know, their evolution that we went through in Douglas County. Do we need to really define what our objective is? Do we, you know, our comprehensive plan talks about preservation of farmland, et cetera. You know, how do we set, what is our objective as a county? Do we want to make it so these are, you know, restricted to land that's difficult to use for other purposes? Do we want to set those types of things in place? Or do we want to make it so it doesn't happen here? I think we need to kind of determine what is our objective.
Well, you know, that's a good comment. And we read that Douglas County, they define class one and class two soils to have to have permission.
Yeah.
You know, that they would have much more stricter position, permission to go into class one or class two soil. And I think we need to follow that as well.
I find it ironic that we're worried about class one and class two on a solar array, but we're not concerned about it on housing. And the housing takes up more acreage than the solar array will ever take up. But neither here nor there. I still agree with you. I still don't think it should be on class one and class two.
But we do talk about class one and class two types of, that's part of our county plan. And I think that's very important. We address that.
And the reason why that concerns me is when you look at the substations that are going to be in the proximity of a solar array, all of those are in class one and class two lands.
Yeah.
Most of them, but still.
So staff, how do you want us to proceed on this?
Well, it's, if you, you know, have, if any of you who have read through it, any of those regulations, if anything sticks out, I know you mentioned about the comp plan, but is there anything regarding, you know, the safety factors you wouldn't, you would want to consider? Acreage limits, pre-application outreach, any of these that I mentioned earlier? Bonding and financing, or decommissioning? I mean, those are all pretty straightforward, but you know, how, you know, if you feel comfortable with, you know, what you've read, or if you want to take some additional time to, to input, you know, to take that in and analyze it, you can. But, you know, you also have the option of directing staff to go ahead and put together some options if you're comfortable with the way that their format is. I could do something similar to us and just present it to you and to look at, and then we can modify it any way we want, you know.
Where does our, where do we stand on right now if one would want to come in and do a solar farm?
They can't do it.
This is done.
It's done, yeah.
How about a wind farm?
Well, the wind farm would, that's already in our regulations. And, but as I think a lot of people have told me, said the wind out here is not as important as solar for a lot of the, so you're not, you're less likely to get wind farms here in Celine County than you would in, like what they did. They did a study in Dickinson County, and they said we're windier than Celine. So that's why we're, they looked at Dickinson.
Valley tends to hinder us, so. You want to start with sizes limits, since that's one of the biggest issues there seems to be? Because on, I don't know what page it's on, but the page has got the yellow mark on it.
Okay.
You know, the, the commercial size, Douglas allows up to a thousand acres total. And on their limited size, it's twenty acres. I haven't come across a thousand acres on anything east of the Rockies, but
Yeah.
I still think a thousand acres is pretty big size. Six forty would probably be my
Other discussion?
I think in Tim's report, looking at under safety, all four of those items, feasibility, emergency response for fire districts, language about seismic testing, projectile impact testing available, and environmental testing required by EPA and KDHNE. I think those things need to be, we need to think about having that in our regs, all four of those items, to a certain extent.
Do you feel those were properly discussed in the Douglas County plan we looked at?
As far as I can tell.
That's, I mean, that's our, kind of our guideline we're looking at.
I didn't read every last word.
Could I get a pop quiz over that, please?
It's under item fifteen.
You can ask.
You can ask, right.
I don't know that it covers projectile testing in any of the Douglas County ones.
No.
But to that point, do we require it for a substation?
So do we just kind of want staff to put us together something, and then we'll tear it apart piece by piece?
Well, we've got something that's tearing apart. We've got it right here, sitting in our hands. Let's get to it.
I'm ready.
I am, too.
Yeah.
I came ready.
Throw something together as far as acreage. I think the class one, class two needs discussing, you know, that we're not going to let a lot of class one, class two soils be put into this. So, proceed on.
Well, my biggest concerns on this one right now is just the size of the limited size and the prime farmlands and, and farmland of statewide importance. If I had my druthers, I'd find some of the worst land in Celine County and put them on there.
Because isn't there one down by Marquette? And it's probably, what, a forty acre patch?
It's not even that big.
It's not even that big.
I think it got twenty acres is all they've got.
Yeah.
It's on a level field, so it was never graded.
There's a big one on the west side of Junction City, right along Seventy-seven Highway. I don't know how many acres it is, but it's a large one. I don't know whether that's federal government or what that is over there, so.
When you consider six hundred and forty acre solar array would take care of all the houses in Celine County, that's pretty amazing.
One thing I wanted to mention also is part of these, I think, administration and I were talking, and we thought that it would be a good idea that on these types of proposals, that whether it's the wind energy, solar energy, the battery energy, storage facilities, that sort of thing, where you all would be more of a recommending body, and the county commission would be like the final
Authority.
Authority to do that. So you would make a recommendation like, like you would with any, like rezoning or something like that case that would go before them. But usually conditional use permits, you'll have final authority unless somebody decides to challenge it. And so, but in this case, it would be a recommendation that would go, you would basically automatically go to the county commission for their consideration.
I think I'm going to go ahead and open it up for public comment, and then bring it back to us. Yeah, thank you. At this time, I'm going to open it up for public comment. If anyone wants to come to the podium, we'd like to hear your comments on this as we proceed
Bill DeSilvy, forty-nine forty-five South Simpson Road, Gypsum. That's a lot to digest, fourteen hundred plus pages. I managed to scan through about five hundred quickly last night. Maybe it wasn't the intent, but the manner in which it placed, is put together reads like a PDF infomercial in favor of this, okay? We're, we're not looking to, to be swayed either way, okay? We want a impartial, the good, the bad, the ugly. I heard mention, he said a bad land that can't be farmed, can't be used. That's a viable option. But things like that, you know, even that needs to be limited. If we're going to look at this on a individual basis, but yet expanded countywide, i.e. a limitation of the whole number of bad acreage that can be used for this, I'm really not sure where the answer lies. I'm still wrestling with that as I continue to review this, this infomercial. And it's just something that I am not averse to business. I am not adverse one bit to the idea of, you know, there's something else other than gas or diesel, that's fine. But it takes so much to get so little. And how much are you willing to pay? This gentleman here, Mr. Fennell, said six hundred and forty acres would light every house in the county. Did you say that?
Yeah.
All right. That's great. Here's the downside. Let's give them that six hundred and forty acres. Is anyone in this grid, in this county, going to see any benefit? No. Just like the battery storage system? Oh, we're just going to set this right here, it's going to be just fine, and we're going to give you jack diddly out of it. But when it goes wrong, you are the ones that have to play the cleanup. You're the ones that have to bear the burden of the toxic waste afterwards. And, Tim, you mentioned financing. Explain that. Are you talking about the county being involved in financing of this?
This is bonding and financing that would be, including language that would require a performance bond.
Right.
That would be no letter of credit. We wouldn't accept a letter of credit in an amount satisfactory to the county engineer. So bonding and financing has to do with bonding of, you have, you have two kinds of bonds in this type of project. You have the performance bond that has to be put up during construction in the event that there's a situation where the, the applicant goes under financially. We have enough money to decommission it. And then we have an additional decommissioning bond on top of that. That would be in the amount that the county engineer would find satisfactory.
Okay, so if we, if we assume that one of these projects goes to the end of its projected life, is there a provision built into this decommissioning bonding that's going to cover the rate of obvious inflation that's going to increase? That's in there?
That's, that would be built in. That would be actually part of the requirement, part of the bond itself. They would have to figure in like, let's say, I'll just say six percent every year, or whatever it is for the life.
That'd be reasonable. But I'm not sure where to go from here. I heard him mention Sullivan Corporation?
DSNO.
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 All right. That's great. Their, their company, their property, correct?
Yes.
All right. That's why I'm, I'm not advocating against established businesses doing this. I'm advocating against commercial interests that are simply coming in here, you know, to quote unquote, add to the grid, sans any, any tangible benefit for the public. That's all I got at the moment.
Good comments.
Don't leave you out.
Okay.
You do realize the grid is the national grid.
I'm aware of that.
You're getting electricity from other locations, other than Kansas.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I just want to make sure of that, because
No, it's not isolated.
This isn't selfish. This is only for Celine County.
No, no.
Okay.
I, I know where you're coming from.
Now, granted, DSNO is using their facility. That's great.
Again, that's what I go back to.
Yeah.
That's their business. That's their property they're building on for their purposes.
And, and that's where I, I would like to be able to see DSNO come into Celine County and put it in place.
Well, you know, I, I would not be averse to the county and city commission establishing some type of a solar use for the, for the benefit of the courthouse. I mean,
Yeah.
I, I'm loathe to stomp on property rights, okay?
So am I.
I live out in the middle of nowhere, Kansas, USA, and I love it. And if I wake up in the morning and decide I need to blow up some Tannerite, I call Mr. Henry and say it's going to be loud. And that's the extent of it. But at the same time, I don't, if it's for an individual property owner, or an individual established corporation, or even a new corporation wants to move in and make alternative energy for their corporation and that location part of their development, that's fine.
But what's not fine, then?
Six hundred and forty acres.
Why? And I'm serious, why?
Because I want to leave this county in as good as or better shape than I, than it was when I came here in the year two thousand.
So you don't think six hundred and forty acres is too much, then? I mean, you do think six hundred and forty acres is too much for an acreage limit, for a large array? I'm not talking about a small array that DSNO would run, or a private company would run to operate their system. I'm talking about the larger rate systems that are being used.
It all depends. How far, how far away from residential communities are planning on placing this?
And that's one of the things that we have to discuss, on buffers. So what's your buffer ideal?
I'd have to get a topography map of the county and study before I could answer that.
Well, I mean, would your buffer be a hundred foot? Would your buffer be five hundred foot from a residential subdivision? That's what I was getting at.
No less than three miles.
So not in my backyard, then, huh?
Basically, correct. If I want something in my backyard, I put it up for my benefit.
You do realize, well, no, can't say that.
No, you can't.
There, you know, it benefits the landowner that you don't want to, you don't want to take away property rights.
Right. But again, that's why I say I'm loathe to stomp on property rights when an individual could potentially benefit from this. You know, that's, you know, I'm, I'm on the fence on very few items, but I am somewhat on that. But again, you know, when the, when those golf ties, hailstones come, like they do frequently here, and crush that six hundred and forty acre array up, how fast you going to get in there with chemicals and neutralize all those heavy metals in the soil?
Well, two things. First of all, most of solar array systems are set up automatically so that they automatically adjust during hailstorms, so that they bounce off and not penetrate through.
Okay.
And then the second thing is, it's almost all glass and some, what, five percent silver? So there's not going to be that much heavy metal that you're concerned about.
Lead, cadmium, zinc oxide.
And you're sure that's what's in them?
In most of them. I'm not sure about the newer ones.
I've got the report here.
I will read, I will read. Have you got a copy of that?
I'll send it, I can send it to you.
I will. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I'd like to open it up to someone else.
Northern Mountain, Sillana. Property rights. Title searches. You better go back to seventeen sixty-four. Who owns this land? You don't have a clear title to it.
Yeah, Mike Jensen, Gypsum. And I've not heard anybody propose, like McPherson County and Butler County and several other counties, that they have moratoriums so that you cannot do these large farms. They're not, staff's not talking about that. And we need to address the fact that there's a lot of places that have moratoriums already in place to stop it. The other thing, if you guys want to take and put this, allow The other thing, if you guys want to take and put this, allow solar farms in the county, you need to take and put something in place, so you put equal acreage in the city limits as you do in the county. The city should have the same amount of solar farms as you're giving to the county. And you talk about poor land, look at how much people are paying for, uh, hunting right land. And people classify that as terrible dirt, but they're paying a big premium for it. So in your eyes is one price, in somebody else's eyes is one value, and somebody else's eyes in another value. You can't do that. I think the best thing to do is just put a flat moratorium on and say nothing other than like, uh, a business wants to do it for them or something like that, but otherwise, no.
And why is that?
What do you mean?
Why do you want to put a moratorium against them? You realize that technology is currently advancing all the time. I mean, I, I, I went through this battle in nineteen ninety-five when we were bitching and moaning and groaning about cell towers. And now you see cell towers all over Saline, Saline County.
Yeah, and a cell tower takes up one little tiny spot.
Takes two to five, two to five acres, yeah.
I see a lot of cell towers that aren't taking an acre.
My easement is two acres.
But you're talking six hundred and forty acres or more. That's a whole different ballgame.
These are solar arrays.
That's a whole different ballgame.
It is.
We don't need it.
Why?
Why do we need them?
Well, renewable reason, renewable energy is going to be coming, whether you, we like it or not.
That's right, they can put it in the desert then.
Is to control it.
They can put it in the desert.
And it is in the desert. And they're making large, these are where the thousand and two thousand acre ones are. We're trying to ma- manage it for Saline County.
Yes.
So that we have renewable energy allowed, but we control how and where and who and why.
Then keep it small. Keep it no larger than ten acres, you know, if that's what.
Ten acres isn't going to get anybody in here.
And that's what we got to look at, it's viable. It's a ten acre field viable.
Ten acres.
Right.
It is for Tony's Pizza or some places like that, that's all the more.
Tony's Pizza viable.
Huh?
It wouldn't even be viable for Tony's Pizza. They're using a lot more energy than that.
Right.
Uh, how many acres is they wanting over there at, uh, Kubota? They're talking about putting some in.
Are they really?
Mm-hmm.
That's good.
They don't have.
I hope that we have something in place to be able to give them some sort of justification or idea of how, on how to manage it.
Well, like I said.
Within Saline County.
Huh?
Within Saline County.
Yeah, but let's equal it up between Saline County and the city of Salina. There's ground in city of Salina, you can put solar farms.
That's a good point too, because there is a lot of rooftops on, in Salina.
They, they're just as good as a pasture.
They're just as good as land anywhere else.
So if you're going to do six hundred and forty acres worth of county, do six hundred and forty acres in the city or nothing. You can eve- even it out. Don't just dump it on the county.
Well, I can see your point, but, I mean, there's a lot of issues that we've got to address.
I agree, and that's one of them. Like I say, if, if they want to do it in the county, then they need to equal the acres in the city. Acre for acre.
I don't think we'll be able to get that, but it'll at least be able to, um.
There's lots of open ground along with the roofs.
Yeah, exactly.
So.
I mentioned that.
So like I say, we can do acre for acre.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good comments, thank you. Someone else?
So I'm Alan Claus Anderson. I'm, uh, the chair of the Energy Practice Group at the Paulsonelli Law Firm. Um, also, I teach at the University of Kansas School a lot, and I teach for Noble Energy. I think the first part of your large packet is a presentation I gave on, so solar's coming to your county, um, that I gave at the Kansas Association of Counties. So it's an interesting topic along with that, plus I live in Douglas County, so I've been worked on a project there, so I think I've hit the bingo card.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah. Yeah. So to the extent I've been helpful on each of those topics, because you've really raised a lot of things. And I mean, it just is, I, I usually get two hours at the law school per time, so this will be a little quicker than that. But a lot of great points you raised from, on the solar side, from, uh, maintaining farm acreage. And I think about a solar project, it's a temporary use, it has a simple pile into the ground. And then if you look at the research and all the things, go, that ground is preserved, and it's actually benefited from that time. Whereas in Douglas County particularly, you lose ground permanently from homes. So someone goes in a home, they take it out of production, that's gone forever. And actually, and I'm not sure I've actually experienced it here, but, uh, trees, like the red cedars. We're losing more, more acres semi-permanently from that than anything else. So from a solar project standpoint, preservation of, uh, agricultural lands is one of the great benefits from it. And then the other things you made, it has to be viable. So it has to be that the grid, so that, because it's efficient, when you do a project of scale, it's the lowest cost source of energy by far, and so it's great for the grid, which we all benefit from. All rate pairs in Kansas, because we are interconnected during the, the big cold snap during the playoff, again, that period of time for the Chiefs playoff, we were importing energy from actually the regions next door. If we didn't have that interconnectivity, we would have had blackouts. So that's the point that you, you raised, which is great. The grid, grid is interconnected. So what I'd say, you know, and I, certainly any questions you have or anything can be helpful there. Uh, but the information's there, like the chemical leaching claims, that's been studied infinitum, that is not an issue. It ca- cannot create chemical leach in a solar. Same thing, good thing with battery storage is, and, and Douglas County covered that within their regulations. We have the standards in order to make that safe as well. So that these, the information and the science is out there, so to, to the extent you need to reach out to those folks. I know the people in Douglas County love to talk about, they'll talk for hours, I've been there for it. So they'd be no doubt, uh, amenable to having conversations and those kind of things. Uh, but I think the, the point is you had to, to get the expertise on those things, it sounds like you've really done a good job of looking at things and, uh, getting that so that you get a set of regulations that are important for the county, address the things that should be addressed. But then if, and then they're viable, because if you kind of put too many things in place, it just, projects won't come. They just aren't, because you're competing to make sure that it is economically appropriate and efficient. And if we do things that harm that, projects just can't, can't work here, so. But I'm happy to answer any questions if anyone has any, yeah.
One quick question. Okay, we're in the northwest part of the county. Somebody else is in the north. How viable is it to connect to the grid if we're all spread out?
Well, so a couple, there's a few things that come into play on all these things. It's one is private property rights, so we have to have willing landowners that want to participate. So, and so that's the first thing. So they're slightly different questions when you think battery storage and you think about, um, solar project. But the same answer there is you have to have a willing participant. So if someone wants, says, this is the best use of my private property rights, I want to use it for either solar or for, um, battery storage. The second would be, you do have to have interconnection to a substation, to a, to a grid location. So we can't just move everything thousands of miles away, because it's, they're just, we can't get the electricity here. Yeah, so you have to be in proximity to a interconnection point. The further are you away, the more you can get it there, it's just more expense. And so then at some point, it's not viable or not possible. So, uh, location, interconnection is important, both from solar and battery storage. So that will limit the places. So you can't, if you just say, oh, they can only be somewhere and they don't have that ability to connect, it also makes it not viable. So it's a good point. Some places in the county just won't be viable for either solar or battery storage simply because they don't have a, a path to interconnection.
And, and that's regarding my question, because if it's not economically viable to be this many miles away from a station, it's not going to happen.
It's just not going to happen, that's right. Because it'll, it'll be competing with another project somewhere else, or just, it just, it won't be a price that's appropriate even to, for a utility offtaker or for grid interconnection. So yeah, that's right.
Okay, thank you, that's a good point.
Well, I like that you brought up the point about the fact that people don't think twice about putting houses on prime farmland, which is a permanent destruction of cropland. But they'll sit here and complain about us putting, um, a solar array, which is a temporary structure that still allows agriculture and be able to, um, put those out in this county.
Absolutely.
And I, you know, one of the things I really learned that I studied for the last month is this term that I did not know, agro-volt- voltage. And I was amazed at the number of YouTube videos from agricultural landowners who put solar arrays on their land. And they talked about how it did not interfere with their agricultural operation. Or else it blended in with their agricultural operation. And that's what sold me, is when I found out that there are people across this country that are in support of it because it is not a destructive method of, uh, leasing their lands.
Oh, that's right. And I've seen kind of the, to the two points, I've had the rancher that, uh, I was talking with, you know, same thing. We were talking about a solar project. And he said, you know, public meetings, some, some people came and said, I don't want to look at it. And he said, our family's been ranching here for four generations. I don't want to look at it, houses, but people keep building houses that I now have to go look at. But I haven't told them they can't go build houses. Now, I want to do something that helps me preserve my land and keep it. And they're saying they don't want to look at something. Well, we, we've been here doing this for this long. So I grew up in the country, and where I, where I grew up now is just filled with houses. I don't think that's attractive, but that was, I didn't own the property, so it's their property rights, they chose to do it. But that's permanently gone.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then the second is on the agro-take. So on a large-scale solar project, at a minimum, the beneficial grasses that go into that benefit, and they have the studies, Iowa State has some really good research on this, on the properties next door. So immediately, you're going to have soil benefits from the soil it's on, but also others. You'll have, uh, pollinator habitats, things like that, that end for all crops and things, have that all the way to actual uses of, you know, whether it be, um, livestock raising or something beyond that that they're kind of advancing on. So there's, that, it, but then at a minimum, it's preserved. So twenty years from now, the best use of that land is go back in agriculture, or for, you know, current like farming practices? It's available for that. Where if you put a house, it's not.
Yeah. Well, you know, we're discussing six hundred and forty acres. Is that something you would see happening in Saline County, a six hundred and forty acre solar field?
Yeah, so this is where we are in the Midwest. Uh, we haven't had a lot of solar projects of scale. We've had some small ones. The biggest one had been kind of a twenty megawatt one. Now, you know, you're, like, you're seeing a lot of the co-ops are doing it because it has really great economic benefits. But those are much smaller. When we're thinking about kind of the, the traditional bigger utility scale that's going into the grid, those are, uh, six hundred and forty acres is actually probably too small. I don't think many projects, they're, they're looking at, if you go to the, in the way we know this, you, you can look at the projects, you have, they have to, uh, make an application for interconnection. They study that, because we have to make sure there's no harm to the grid, and then they'll go to anyone who wants to do a project and say, here's what you have to do to upgrade the grid in order for it to work. The, I think the average size now above that is two hundred eight megawatt projects and above, which that takes you into a decent size above a thousand acres. The way Douglas County, that project that, that kind of spurred their looking at the regulations is Johnson County and Douglas County. So they kind of felt more comfortable doing a limit at a thousand. They also measure it by the area that's covered by panels, which is also a smart way to do, and I'll tell you why that is. Because you want to work with landowners and the land itself. So you don't want, in places where it's not appropriate, just to be forced to cover the ground with panels, you know, as tight as possible. Some farmers want to say, let's say they have a hundred acres, they say, well, I want to keep this twenty without anything. We want to be able to do that, and you don't want it to go against your cap. So the way they did it is measured by the actual panel coverage as well. But it is a concern, is that at, at six hundred and forty acres, it would really be, um, it'd probably take a lot of projects to say they're just not viable at that, at that size. And I understand that, that's the push-pull in a county, but that probably puts you, not probably.
So that's how they came up with a thousand acres, is to get that twenty.
Because they had two. So they had two counties in order to do it. If a project's just in one county, a thousand acres probably doesn't work. Theirs, they just happened to know that it was, that the project was bordering onto, so it kind of allowed them to, to feel comfortable. I, I think they would revisit that too. That was kind of their thought, is well, let's, let's let this one go forward, and then we'll be able to do it, because they, they kind of knew the project in front of them.
I, uh, was reading up on Sedgwick County and the issues that they were having, and they were talking about a six hundred and forty. And that's where I came up with the six forty number.
So they did, so and I'm quite active in Sedgwick County as well, and that is not part of the proposed regulations.
Okay.
They ended up, uh, there was one comment by a commissioner who said he was interested in that, and then it was.
I read his comment.
And then, uh, kind of where they are in the status, they, they had created regulations. They'd heard some things, so they kind of reopened them, looked at them, made some revisions, a little bit to the security section, which is, was well described. That's where you want to, you want a bond or letter of credit or something in place to make sure it could be decommissioned at the end. And they kind of added some things there. The regulations that went back to the planning, or to the county commission, um, which were on a unanimous vote, except for one vote who thought they were too stringent, so they were pretty well supported, uh, does not have an acreage cap.
So they removed the acreage?
They, it never went in. And so they, they talked about it, it never went in. It was discussed and never got put in. Now, the county commission has not, is not.
Finalized.
Finalized yet. So that's the recommended version from the planning commission such as yours. It went through a really exhaustive process. I'd say Sedgwick County is another. If you want to look at a staff that did a ton of, a ton of work and looked at things, I think if you took, take a look at the version they have in place that's recommended now, that's a, a group that did a really good job too. It went through all these issues. They brought in their health department to look at chemical leaching and all the different things, not a problem. They went through all the, you know, just all the things that you hear and really did some good work.
Well, it's definitely a fascinating topic.
Oh, it is, it is.
It's been, the horse has been beat to death on this topic.
It, it has, and I've seen that horse die many times.
So do you feel a six hundred and forty acre would discourage a lot of?
I think a lot, a lot of projects just.
If we put a limit of six forty, that'd probably discourage a lot of.
Yeah, it just, that, what will happen is the, the projects will go to market, like the utilities will say, here's what I'm interested in. And they'll be interested in something that's bigger than that. I wouldn't say it would be totally, there could be some projects at that scale. So I, I wouldn't want to say it would eliminate all of them. I'd be confident that many of them, that just, there wouldn't be enough acreage in order to make a project work.
That's a good point.
And it is a good point, but we have to balance the needs of Saline County versus the needs of somebody else wanting to come in here and put in a thousand acres.
Right.
And finding all the landowners that'll be willing to, uh, and I, I mean, they throw out good money, I realize that, but, and you still get to use your land. Still, it's still agricultural land, but I just, I question whether that would happen.
Yeah, and that's, that is always the first test. I've been part of projects, they went into a community, didn't have enough people interested in participating. And that's, you notice again, it's their, their property rights, so you say, thanks, that, that tells us what we need to know, and you move on. And so, you know, same thing here. And then with battery storage, of course, I think the, um, it's obviously a much smaller footprint and has credible benefits to the grid. That's, you know, Texas has done a lot of battery storage, and it's been enormous to the, really, they struggled. Because, you know, Texas doesn't have that interconnectivity. It's just Texas, not even all of it. So when they have problems, they have real problems. And so the battery storage has been just enormous benefit to them on this last winter issues, so.
Stan, are you got any questions for, we have a very good. Comment, you're not leaving, you know that.
Yeah, funny timing on this, yeah.
I had a quick question. Uh, Douglas County was a thousand acres, is that correct? And then is neighboring Johnson County, was that two thousand? Is that what they had in their language?
They had, and I, it's either, I think it's two thousand, two thousand or fifteen hundred, but I think it was two thousand.
And they, they split Douglas and Johnson, that project that was.
Correct.
Proposed there, right?
Okay. So they had kind of, you know, and they all knew this, there's about three thousand acres to work with for the project.
Okay. And that's going for Evergy, right? To the grid?
So there's, that one is, um, yeah, there's not an offtaker known yet, so it's, it, it could go to Evergy, could go elsewhere. Evergy's, um, been pretty active. The utilities in the region have been real active. Solar's just great for the grid. What, I mean, I won't go too energy nerdy, but you know, you get, you think about our hottest days in the summer, and we, that's when we just, everyone has air conditioning going, everything's going, that's, that's when solar's cranking too. So that's the most expensive energy for utilities to go out and buy, which means most expensive for rate pairs. So you add solar, it's giving you the energy at the time, it's the most expensive, yeah. Then what's great is if, if you then, if you do pair either with a project or just standalone, when you have battery storage, then what it allows you to do is, like, the battery storage, they can fill during the cheap power and release during expensive power that pairs, you know, either, you know, together or apart.
Sell high.
It's fantastic, because that, that just, that's, there was, if, if we buy, if we buy high, sell high, we all pay for it, because all those costs go straight through to us. So anything a utility pays for, we, we just pass this through to us. So that's why when you get battery storage and you get solar or solar and, and just battery storage, that helps us on the rates. That's what it's doing. And, and protection against severe events, like if we have a freezing something, we have storms, we have whatever it is, th- those, those can help on that as well. So it does reliability, but really helps on rates.
You guys got any other questions?
Grab him when we got him.
I'll be here.
Very good comments, really appreciate this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other public comment? Please come to the podium.
Teresa Swisher, forty-eight fifty-three East McReynolds Road. And during the battery energy storage, um, event, we'll call it an event, there was somebody coming around to us wanting to, to rent, lease our land for solar. And they were looking for, for a thousand to fifteen hundred acres to rent at, at lease at that time. And I know there were some people that did sign up. So I know there's people looking, uh, for that big of places in Saline County. people looking for that big of places in Celine County. We did not choose to lease our land with them, obviously. Also, there is, on the internet, there were several pictures and articles about hailstorms and the damage they had done to some solar panels, like in Damon, Texas had 1,000 plus acres of solar panels damaged. Also Fort Bend, Colorado. And this is all recently. And I truly, I wonder, what is it be, what is it releasing? I mean, they're supposedly tamper resistant, but if you saw these pictures, they weren't tamper resistant after the hail took care of them. So that would be a concern of mine. Let's just see here. One of the things I would like to see maybe that we rewrite in is that whoever, should we decide to go forward with this, that we write in that they would be responsible for all the costs to keep the roads maintained, that they're going to use to, to install this. No, no road forgivenesses, that they should pay for fire department costs so that, or, or, you know, whatever costs we have from the community. They should pay for all the compliance for, for government regs. Those are some things I think we need to be sure we include in there. That we wouldn't want to be responsible for any of those costs because I don't know what Celine County is really going to get out of it, other than, you know, grid time.
One of the things you had mentioned with road maintenance, that would be addressed with any of these projects.
Okay.
Because I know in Dickinson County, where I'm at, you know, most of the week, I said they, we're working on, we have regulations where we have road maintenance agreements for these types of projects, where the developer is responsible for making sure that the roads after, even after construction, during maintenance, that they pay to, and have the, come back with their subcontractors and patch the roads and make them better than they were, in some cases, better than they were before.
Right. Right. And in some of the reading I did, there were some counties that are charging $1,000 per year, per panel, for the life of the solar field for, to, for tax reasons. You know, that's maybe something to think about, too. That would at least-
Right. That would be, that would be what I think, what we used to call it, are, still do a pilot agreement of payment in lieu of taxes. That's usually what's, what that usually refers to.
So, so a lot of times when you give them the abatement, you do the, the payment in lieu of.
Yes. Yes.
So, you know, if you're giving them an abatement, I think you definitely need to be thinking about, you're giving away, for 10 years, you're giving up your taxes. My other question would be, is a solar field, I mean, I've been reading a lot, like you guys all have, that the solar fields are taking the property values for houses and land down that are, that are close to them, like 30 to 40 percent. I mean, that, that's what I'm reading. Whether that's factual or not, I don't know.
I've got one right here that'll tell you that in Illinois-
Okay.
They've got much higher ag values than what we've got here. And they increased 2 percent.
How could it increase? Why would it increase?
Did an entire study. Solar and property values. I've got that right here. You can take a look at it later.
I will. I will. Because I'd be interested in that.
That's just one state.
That's one expensive state. Yes.
Yeah.
Any other public comment?
Yes.
Brenda Tolson, Marcus, 5613 South Cunningham Road.
Come to the podium and start your, so we-
Thank you.
So we know who you are.
Hi. Nice to meet all of you.
Welcome aboard.
Brenda Tolson Marcus, 5613 South Cunningham Road. And I've had the same opportunity as yourself and working in this industry to be able to know that there's options. And many states have really looked at this. It's just not, I know that you've researched the local Kansas ordinances, but throughout the country, many states have taken a position on this. MIT, Emory University, Georgia Tech have all gotten involved and looked at, how do we really make a balance for the agriculture? And their position is, and this is between North Carolina, this is between Georgia, this is between Massachusetts, Maryland, where they have, nine states have said, we never want more than a solar field of 50 acres. And if you kind of think about what are greatest natural resources that we have in Celine County, it's our farm ground. I mean, other land, I mean, I don't know how much you've all traveled and gone coast to coast in this nation. But when you look at our farm ground, it's not red, it's not yellow, it's nice black, red, rich soil. And we feed millions of people out of our ground. And once that commodity is used up in another way, that is being reimbursed just because of this green initiative, we need to really step back and say, is this the best use of this wonderful asset? So I think if you look at what the other model ordinances have done, they've said, okay, if you want to do this, you can do this per, per line, you can do it per township, 50 acres, period. And, and they've also, on the green energy component, they, they've looked at it and they said, okay, how do we want the ground to be devised? Do we want pasture ground? Do we want it to be trees? And you, we've got to all understand, all the work and the reason they're coming after our farm ground, not for us, not to lower our energy costs, this is being sent out of state. Almost all of it is being sent out of state. So why would we be giving up what is, makes our state, our county, one of the most beautiful assets that we have and cover it in solar fields to send that out of state? It, it doesn't make sense to me. And, and you look at it and you look at the tax base and you look at who your partners are. Your partner in this community, because you pay your taxes, you pay your taxes. Every one of us are paying our taxes. And as it goes up, we continue to invest in this community. And we invest by your leadership roles, by being involved, by being board members, by voting for middle levy, to increase our middle levy, to increase education for our children. And in turn, we're going to, we're going to write off through the Inflation Reduction Act for 10 years, any money. And then there's, and I don't know how many of you read this presentation. Did you read it? Did you receive it? And, and the facts are, not only do they get all these rebates, then there's two and three other, and four other rebates. So you don't know how many layers are coming out of that. But every year, you know, we as farmers are going to pay our taxes and we're going to take care of you. And we're going to believe in this community and we're going to invest in this community. So I, I think I'm asking everyone of you, as leaders, no different than I'm a leader in, in the environmental field, to stop and really say, is this what we want to do? Do we want to sacrifice our God-given, most great asset that we have in this county? It's not our pastures, it's not our highways, it's our farm ground. And to let somebody come in and take our farm ground, or us to even give that asset up for 30 or 40 years, we're not going to recover it. So really think through this ordinance. Think through and say, do we want to bring in new ingenuity? Do we want to bring in new technology? Do we want to bring in new, you know, bioengineering firms? Those kind of things. Or do we want to give up our revenue, minimum school revenue that we're going to get, when most of it is going to be through, written off through the government, and they're getting kickbacks upon kickbacks upon kickbacks, and not, and not receive the growth of the community? We want to bring in young kids, we want to bring in education, we want to bring in all kinds of assets. So at the end of the day, I just want to say, you guys read through this, you understand that our model ordinance, you know, we need to, to stop and say, is this really what we want to do for our community? And every one of you could have a solar field put in right next to you. And whether, before you ever know it, you could end up having all kinds of toxicological impacts that will affect you because of sensitivity. And you would have to sell your farm. And you would have to go to your medical team. And you would have to deal with it. And so I'm not saying that's going to affect everybody, but you don't know until it's there. And is that really something you want your landowners, your partners, your tax base to give up because of some ordinance that you want to write just for a few people that aren't even going to be paying taxes, at least for a minimum of 10 years? I think not. And so the bottom line is, if, if any of you have any questions about the radio, electromagnetic fields and what it can do, and what it can do to our children. And the one thing that I, I'm really concerned about us as a community is how are you going to regulate it? How are you going to manage it? Because if I would come to you and say, okay, how are you going to read the EMFs that are coming off of this field? How do you know they're using the best illumination so it's not creating all kinds of glares? How are you going to absolutely ensure that this is being operated so that people aren't getting electrocuted in these fields? What are you going to do? Bring on another personnel into the county and pay them to regulate this and administer it? So then, once again, you got more overheads. So think through every one of these bullet points. And if any of you have any questions, please reach out to your citizens because we are a deep, deep resource. We have spent thousands of hours researching things. This is our field. We are, we are nationally recognized individuals. We work as expert witness. And you've got that commodity. So you've had people that have come in and they don't have anywhere the credentials that your own community members have. So please, you know, know you have this gift. And I've offered Mr. Hamilton dozens of times, almost a dozen times in writing, let us help you. Let us partner with you. But it's been crickets. So we're here. And please let us be part of this. Please, please really ask our questions and we'll give you the research papers behind it. We'll give you the data. We'll give you all the curated information. So you all will be making great decisions and not giving our tax base away. Thank you all so much. Any questions?
Thank you. Don't run off.
Oh, okay.
You're not done here. I agree on something.
Okay.
It pisses me off that they get a 10-year relaxation of taxes. And I, I brought that to the attention. But that is a state law. That's not anything else but a state law. So you can go to your state and tell them you don't appreciate it.
Well, but you got to back up.
You and I agree with that.
But under the Inflation Reduction Act that came out of Washington DC, that's a part of the 10-year agreement.
I would like to find a way to make sure they pay something for the next, for the first 10 years.
Well, and, and on top of that, if you look at what else, under the National Renewable Energy Laboratory, that's another rebate. Under the database of state initiatives and renewables and efficiency, another rebate. I'm telling you, gentlemen, think long and hard. Because you're, it's always interesting.
They are going to get money no matter what.
Right. That's not our control.
That is not our issue.
Yeah, but-
Our issue is, is it suitable? And how are we going to be able to control it for Celine County?
That's exactly my point. And so my point is, is who are you going to have that's going to have the knowledge and the initiative and, and know how to make sure, you're going to say, when you put these panels in, you're not going to put the cheap panels in. You're going to make sure they're sealed. You're going to make sure that, because can I tell you?
I do believe that company's going to know better.
I don't think so. I think if you have a choice, if you think, what, what drives-
For making money. They're going to make sure they've got the best they've got.
I, I, I would disagree with you.
This is the cheapest source of energy that they're going to come across.
Of corporations.
Thousands.
Thousands of corporations throughout the country. And I'm telling you, that is not always their lens. And it's because, at the end of the day, it's about business. It's about a bottom line. And, and I'm so, I'm so for driving technology. I really am. And I'm so for being smart. But this and our great, beautiful Celine County and our rich soil and our gifts that we have in this area, let us come to you and, and help you bring in bioengineering. Let's bring in higher education. Let's bring in where the revenue comes back.
Talking about solar array.
I know, but I'm saying, you know, let's, let's not even write an ordinance, nonetheless, we limit it. And we control it. And we know how we're going to regulate it. And we know how we're going to measure it. And if we don't do that, then we shouldn't do it. We shouldn't, it's like, don't get involved if you don't know how you're going to manage it. And I'm saying, we're going to manage this for 30 years. If you, if you sign up, this is a 30-year engagement.
They're usually a 40-year contract.
Okay. And, and so I'm sitting here saying, is that really, and you know, so one of the things we did is we said, okay, let's see how this has been implemented. So Southeast of Celine, okay? I worked for Wilson and Company when I first started my career, after I got my engineering degree and my background. And they built Southeast of Celine. And so when they built that, they, we had a solar field at Southeast of Celine. Are you guys familiar with that? And so that was technology. Wilson and Company won all kinds of awards. It was recognized. It was, there was a way of measuring the grid. KPNL at the time was part of the cooperative agreement. And all of that has been completely destroyed. It's been torn down, removed. And I'm sitting here saying, it didn't have the 40-year life. You know, it didn't have, so here, here we had a state of the art, we had a school district, we had a middle levy that your citizens paid for to drive this technology. And then what ends up happening? It's completely destroyed. So I'm sitting here saying, if that's happened in our school systems, if this has happened, you know, at Southeast of Celine, if they've taken, torn it down, maybe we need to say, what, what was the failure point of that bed and that solar field being effective? That's, that's all I'm saying. Let's learn from past history. And let's learn how we're going to move forward. But please understand, let's take care of our house. And, and let's make sure, because I can tell you, the nine states that have looked at this, and I'm talking about MIT, Emory, Georgia Tech, all the people that pulled it in. And if you'd like to see any of these model plans, I'll be so glad to share them with you. I've got every single reference behind every single data point and how they made those calls. They worked on it for 18 solid months to make those calls for those states. And every single one of them stepped back and said, we are not going to give up more than ever 50 acres, period. That's it. And so, you know what? And who benefits? I mean, if you think about why, why we're doing this, this is going out of state. You heard Evergy last year say, we don't need, we don't need this. I mean, they told us point blank, they put it in, in writing, black and white. They give, they gave our position. And so I'm sitting here saying, why are we giving up our asset to take care of somebody outside? And if you really look at the numbers, I mean, you're looking at a 10 acres and, and the ratios that we're looking at to ever achieve what needs to be done. So it takes Dominion, and I just went to a sustainability conference at Duke University a week ago. Okay? And this was out of Washington DC. This is all the top leaders. And Dominion Energy did a report and they said, for 16,000 megawatts of solar production, it requires 160,000 acres of land. Okay? So it's a 1 to 10 ratios. Are we ready to do that to our beautiful county? I don't think so. If I was sitting in every one of your shoes, it would be a call that, that would be an easy call to say, no, I believe in green energy, but not this type of green energy, not to use our farm fields for this. If you want to use the airfield base, the old SAC airfield base, perfect. If you want to use the top of a dump, perfect. Use those for solar beds all day long. But don't use, don't allow our farm ground more than 50 acres ever to be used. And that's my appeal to you. Any questions?
Good comments. Thank you.
Thank you for honoring that. I appreciate you doing-
And we are going to protect our class one and class two soils.
Excuse me?
We are going to protect our class one and class two soils, most definitely. That's part of our plan.
And never more than 50 acres. Yeah. So thank you, Duane. Because I- And never more than 50 acres, yeah. So thank you, Dwayne, because I know.
We're always going to protect that.
Thank you, thank you. Okay.
Good comments.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Good comments. Back to the podium, please. Podium?
I'd like to propose especially to the people of our township and others concerned individuals in the county that basically, we kind of take a, a few sections of this and have it assigned amongst ourselves, and maybe even work directly with you guys to really sort through it and hash out what would be a reasonable plan, because it's a lot to digest on a singular basis.
I totally agree with you. Thank you. Comments? Staff?
Just that the, the comments, the input from the public, that's why these hearings are, we have these hearings like this, so that the public can provide input. So just thought I'd remind.
And we do, we want the public's comment on this. It's, it's not an easy subject. And we're not going to make a hasty decision. So how would you like us to proceed forward?
It's up, up to you all. Do you want to, do you want to, I mean, I guess, say, the options are, we can...
Let's bring it back between us. Comments, comments I'm hearing. If we don't get 1,000 acres, we're probably not going to get one.
Right.
Right? I mean, just, that's kind of what we're hearing. If we do our 640 acres, if we do our 50 acres, we don't have no interest in that.
No.
We're pretty well taking care of our problem. If we start putting limits like that, we've, we've solved our problem.
We just leave it at 20 acres for this small, and...
I'm open up for discussion. I listened to what she said, I've listened to what he said.
Well, there's 45 other, 45,000 other people too.
I know, I know, and I say.
And that's, and that's what we need to consider, is this, you know, are we, by doing that, infringing, infringing on the rights of some that may want to lease some land and do this?
Exactly.
There's got to be some that want that.
There's nothing wrong with this. I mean, one, number one, we're not destroying this land by putting this solar array in.
No.
We're not, I mean, like I said, I've told you guys time and time again, where's the people bitching about all these houses going on down Ohio Street?
Right.
Why aren't they out there bitching and raising the hell about taking out this prime farmland?
Right.
You know, that's gone. That'll never produce another acre.
It's done.
It's done.
Right.
This will at least allow us to be able to make, have a rancher or a farmer to be able to make money off of his land and still be able to either graze it or farm it.
And it's hard to talk about changing of property values because of this. You've now brought rental income in. You know, we've heard about it with the wind generators. I don't want to look at them, but yet I'm getting $6,000 a year rent.
Right. And it, it takes the hell out of me that they get 10 years of no taxes. That pisses me off to no end.
Right.
But that's nothing we can do about it.
Right. So do we want to put a limit on acres?
I guess that's the question. If we limit it to under 1,000, now we're going to basically shut out any large...
Exactly. That's what, are you hearing the same thing?
I'm fine with just leaving it at 640 and being done with it.
If we do something like that, I think we're hearing that probably won't be a lot of interest anyway.
But if DSNO wants to come, that's a local...
Can they get an exception to the permit?
For what?
If they wanted more acres.
Well, yeah.
We could always grant a variance.
In the Douglas County, it says that you can, you can ask for more.
We could always grant a variance if...
Right.
I think we're just going to leave it with us right now. Just let us discuss, please.
Well, one of the alternatives is to direct staff to develop language alternatives. We could ask Tim, I mean, I'm just, my thought, ask him to, to put together some alternatives, acreage, safety, everything that we've been talking about, and we discuss it at the next meeting.
Every one of those have been addressed in this Douglas County.
Right.
The only thing that was not addressed, but was addressed in the, in the documents that Tim sent us, is their discussion on the number of acres, and then their discussion on a couple of other items that I had, but...
My point is maybe have Tim write up something for us, for Sling County.
Well, this was supposed to be our template.
Right.
Based on that, I guess.
But don't we agree, Class 1, Class 2 soils will not be considered?
That needs to be in there.
They will not be considered.
Right.
That takes care of that problem right away.
Right.
So now, if you want to come out in my CRP field, you know, and ask me to take it out of CRP, to do something like this, then that's my decision.
Because I can still raise, I can still put my goats and my cattle out there.
There you go. Just keep them off my place.
Keep your goats to yourselves.
But no, we're going to protect the Class 1, Class 2 soils.
Yeah.
I wish we could do that for lands, I mean, for buildings.
Right, we do it for the housing.
No, we don't. Home, all that land on...
Well, if you come over to my place, and I use building permit, I have to restrict the rest of my acres.
We got thousands of acres of Class 1 and Class 2 land going into houses. I don't see the uproar.
Yeah. But anyway, that's, I totally agree with, we're going to protect the Class 1, Class 2. If we want to put a limitation on acres, I think we found out, we solved a lot of our problems right there. It's going to be a very small scale, and it may not be even a viable option. It's kind of what I'm hearing.
Okay.
Agreed?
And then I'll follow yours, and just say, "Tim, rewrite this, put in our additions and make it Sling County, and let's address Sling County's next, next month."
And I'd like to comment, we're going to tear this a little more apart, piece by piece, instead of, you know, we're talking a little about this, and a little about this, then we're going to tear this apart and bring the community in to hear all of it. I think we're on the right track.
This thing says, "You will not take the top soil off."
Exactly.
It will remain on that place.
Yes.
And you're not destroying that land. All you're doing is putting up those arrays, and that's it. You're going to have...
I think it addressed the preservation of our soil quite well.
I, I just had a, a quick comment. I've noticed, though, in one of the reasons that I chose Douglas, and, and I'm sure it's why you all did too, is because they're the most stringent, but they're also, because they're an urban county.
Correct.
They tend to be very conservative with the farm ground that they've got, and so they require their, whatever their solar arrays are, to be elevated so high, so that you can plant, yeah, so that you can get around those things, and so that's...
Is what I noticed on that.
Yeah, and that's the first thing I noticed too, so that's...
That's the reason why I keep harping about the fact it's still agricultural use.
It's still agricultural.
It's not taken out of agricultural use.
Exactly. And I guess I will ask one question. If it's on a pasture ground, do they still allow the grazing around them?
It, it is possible in some cases. One thing about utility scale project is, under the regulatory rules, it's critical infrastructure, because then we, once we have energy that's part of our capacity, we count on. We'd be careful about putting things around it. So it can be, and there are examples, sheep are the usual one, goats are a little too, a little too curious, and a little too everything, and other things are too big. So there are examples where sheep have been used, but it has to be done in a way with people that are experienced at doing it.
Right.
So it's possible with sheep.
Hadler are too big, and goats are too damn curious.
Exactly.
Sheep are dumb enough to just...
Boy, there's our animal expert here.
That's, that sums it up, that's right. And one thing on the tax, I'll mention, just as for clarification, it does have a 10-year property tax exemption, personal property tax exemption, not real property. And that is from the state, and it's the same as all the other energy sources, so natural gas, coal, everyone has a 10-year exemption. I will tell you, farm equipment is lifetime exempt. And we, so if you go through the list of all the things that have exemption, it's a long list, that of, much of which I can quote from, because this topic comes up. But yeah, farm equipment is, is lifetime exempt. But you know, other machinery and equipment is lifetime exempt, so there's other things in that category. But the real property tax is not. So what happens with a solar project or with battery storage is, in general, it'll change the assessment, not the classification from a zoning perspective, but the classification would go from farm to commercial. And so the real property tax would increase significantly, and that's from day one.
I'm glad you brought that up, because I was going to ask you about that, because I was going to compare the cell tower.
Yep.
Property tax. Is that the same thing?
Uh, I think...
It's now a commercial, two-acre lot.
Yes, right.
That's taxed at the commercial layer, level.
That's exactly right.
And then, as, if somebody comes in and puts in a 640 acre, it goes from agricultural taxes to commercial taxes.
Correct. On the place where the equipment's located. So with wind projects, that was kind of an acre to two acres per area, so similar to a cell tower. With a solar project, it's more, so more than...
The county will still receive their property taxes from that solar array.
Just at a much higher rate.
Much higher.
Much higher rate.
But higher rate.
Much higher rate. So when you talk about paying our fair share, this one will now pay a bigger fair share, when it converts to...
Now, I'm glad you clarified that, because I asked the wrong question this morning.
Right. And there hasn't been, there haven't been too many examples of this, and so that's, with wind, we've had a lot, and that's what they've done. They converted over the assessment from agriculture to commercial, so it increases that.
This could be a significant windfall on taxes for the county.
Absolutely, absolutely. It's very significant. So we've, they did modeling, University of Kansas did a economic impact report for the one that, that's still in potential development in Douglas and Johnson County, and it's a, it's a real number.
Good.
Yeah.
Thanks for clarifying that.
Yeah, I think with that, I'm going to close the discussion then. To the public, any, bring it back to my commissioner, is there anything else you want to? Dawn, I like your idea, why don't you rephrase that?
Motion?
No, as far as going... Yeah, give me a motion to...
All right, Mr. Chairman, we'd like to direct staff, Tim Hamilton, to develop language alternatives based on the Lawrence model, to consider for amendment of 13A-12.13 to be reviewed at the next meeting.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
And we want to make sure, this is discussion time, I want to make sure that we get the other, other things in there, like Mr. Flaherty here said.
Change Douglas County to Sling County.
Yeah, well, that's one.
That was important.
That's one.
Yeah, we'll send it, then tell them we changed.
But talk about the 1 and 2 soils, and, and some of the other things that we, that we talked about.
I've got no 1 and 2 soils, I've got to address the safety, like we would want to do, and then also acreage limits of 640.
Yeah.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
I got seconds all over the place, okay. Been properly moved and seconded, that we have staff prepare a document.
And that everybody read it between now and the next month.
And...
It's got to get it done first.
With guidelines that we have discussed tonight, that we will reopen it for discussion at a, hopefully maybe our next meeting. Hopefully.
How fast can you write there, Tim?
I do not want 700 pages sent in this next document. All those in favor, say aye.
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 No 700.
Pose same sign, the motion does carry unanimously. With that, I will entertain a motion for, any more comments from staff?
None here.
I'll entertain a motion for dismissal. I don't care.
Dismissed.
In wait. Ah, golly. You got 10 seconds to get that.
It's done, good.